Hello, everyone. I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of the dismissal council of the city of Bayonne of May 18, 2022 has been invited to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of the meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted in file with the City Clerk and the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted in file with the City Clerk and forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger by fax and regular mail on May 13, 2022. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Roll call, please, Ms. Medina.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Mr. Galais.
Here.
Mr. La Paluza.
Here.
Mr. Perez.
Here.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Here. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which serves us, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready? Okay. Oh, one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement with the Hudson County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of up to $95 million aggregate principal amount of the authority's guaranteed lease revenue bonds and any notes issued in anticipation thereof by the Hudson County Improvement Authority. It was introduced and passed first reading held April 14, 2021, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at the meeting of May 12. It was postponed to the meetings of January 16, July 14, August 17, September 22, October 20, November 10, December 15, 2021, and January 19, February 16, March 16, and April 20, 2022. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. Are you going forward with this or are we postponing to June?
I would love to go forward. Oh, it was to June 15. I'll move it.
Move it to June 15?
No, I mean, I'll move it to go forward.
Go forward, okay. And the second?
Second.
And on the motion to go forward, Mr. Carroll.
Is there a motion to go forward?
A motion postponing this?
Well, no, to go forward, so we're going to move to final passage.
That vote no. On the motion.
On the motion.
Why is it?
Well, it's on motion to order final passage. That's what I should have said. The council president moved it for ordering final passage. Mr. Galais moved it to be seconded.
Second.
You did. And on the motion ordering final passage, Mr. Carroll.
Again, we're moving to postpone this to June 15.
No.
Order final passage of this.
Yes.
That I voted.
No. Mr. Galais.
Abstain.
Mr. La Paluza?
No.
Mr. Perez?
No.
Ms. Nedrowski?
No.
So this did not pass final passage, so it's failed adoption. Oh, two is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, state of New Jersey, authorizing the guarantee of the payment of the principal of and the interest on not exceeding $95 million aggregate principal amount of the city's guaranteed lease revenue bonds to be issued by the Hudson County Improvement Authority for the purpose of providing additional security therefore and determining certain other matters in connection therewith. This was also introduced April 14, 2021, was given a public hearing on May 12, 2021, and has been postponed through the meetings from June to April 20, 2022. Is now before council for its final passage.
I move it to be heard for final passage.
Second.
And on the motion for final passage, Mr. Carroll.
No, I move that we postpone it.
We're voting. We all have a vote, so.
I have a...
So can we finish our vote?
I want to make sure that people know what they're voting on. The ordinance was scheduled for hearing and it had been, there had been previous postponements through, and the measure on today was through June 15.
You're really interrupting the process.
You made a motion to move it for final passage today.
Yes.
Okay.
I understand that.
So is the vote, and if I'm wrong, I think you've got a question. Is this an up and down vote on this matter today or does it move this to June 15, 2022?
Up and down vote on today. That's what Madeline said.
It's to order final passage.
That's what it's up for. We all got it.
It was up for postponing the final passage, which is what I moved to do, postpone it to June 15.
No.
I voted no on your motion to open it for an up and down today.
Madeline, the question is, what happened to that first? What happened to the first?
That's what she said. You have to listen.
It was on for postponing to June 15.
Right.
Correct.
Move that we deal with it as it is postponed.
The council president moved it to have it voted for final passage.
And it was seconded.
The vote, right, and it was seconded.
And it was taken.
And then the vote, and the vote on whether or not it was to go to final passage was defeated.
No, there's no such vote.
Yes, it was.
I believe that Mr., I believe that the councilman voted no on it. We're voting no to the motion to have this matter considered for final passage. And I believe that the correct thing subsequent to that should have been if that failed, then there's the, what's on the agenda is a postponement of final passage of the ordinance till June 15.
Are you the clerk?
So in that case, Mr. Carroll moved to... Hold on.
I move to continue to postpone it until June 15 as the ordinance is written in front of us.
But that's not what the, that's just the way it's written, but there was no change in the ordinance, actually.
But you have to understand, your motion has to be...
I know what my motion was, and Madeline was quite clear.
Your motion was to move it for a final hearing.
Yes, yes.
That was defeated, therefore there is no final hearing.
That's not what Madeline said. Madeline, can you repeat what you said?
But I'm telling you, that's what the vote...
But Madeline's the clerk. It's her.
Understood, and I'm having discussion with Madeline right now about how, what the net effect of that motion by the council president, my belief is that the motion by the council president to have it heard for final passage this evening was defeated three to two.
That wasn't the motion.
Your motion was to have a final hea...
To have a hearing, not to postpone, to hear it.
It wasn't scheduled for hearing. It was scheduled for, as it says, postponing final passage.
So is your intention to open the public hearing again?
We already had the public hearing, right?
Right, you had the public hearing, you closed it.
And we closed it, and so now I'm voting for final passage. I mean, we know whenever, we never changed the, I mean, the clerk took it and wrote in there to postpone it until, but there was never a motion to do that. That's just the way it was written. It should have just never really been written that way. Every week it should have to be one of the...
I think it's important that the will of the council be done, and I think you guys need to understand what you were voting on in that first one. And I believe what you said was you wanted to have it moved for final passage when the rest of the council believed it was on to be, to be put out for a month.
I don't, I'm just saying what I said, what Madeline said, and what we voted on.
What it was, it was a motion for final passage.
Yes.
Which it failed.
Yes.
And that turned somebody, if they wanted to postpone it to June 16, somebody has to make a motion second and you vote on it again.
Well, you can't. We already voted on it and it's died. We already voted on the first one. It's voted and done.
I don't, I don't think the council, the remainder of council understood what your motion was.
We voted on it. Can we, we on item two, Madeline? We'll explore that one.
A motion was asked for to vote on this. That motion was defeated. We now need to return to oh one, where I make a motion to postpone it to June 15.
We already voted it down.
The motion to move... The motion to open it was defeated. We now are faced with this continuing motion here.
Final passage was defeated. You are given the opportunity to move in second, second it to be postponed again.
Correct. We want to postpone it again.
We already carried it.
There's a motion on the floor.
To carry what, the second one?
No, to carry, to move number one.
How do you carry something we voted down? Are we undoing the vote?
You voted the final passage. Now, Mr. Carroll is making a motion to re, to postpone it to June.
No, but the question before this, I believe the council believed what was before them was that this was going to be moved, because as it says on the...
I not only believe that, I stated that as I was voting. And if that was incorrect, it should have been clarified at that moment.
We asked three times and they told me no. Three times.
So Madeline, were we on number two? He's making a motion to postpone that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, Mr. Carroll, your motion to postpone to June?
On two?
On two.
On two, I motion to postpone to June.
And a second?
Second.
I'm not laughing. And on the motion to postpone...
Madeline, we didn't take the, we didn't, I already had the motion, not, just good. That's fine.
On the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
No.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
No.
Postpone to June 15. Oh, my God. Oh, three is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, approving and authorizing the execution of a reimbursement agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Six Commerce Urban Renewal LLC. It is my understanding this is going to be postponed as well?
Correct. We request from council to carry that one to the next month.
And on the motion to postpone to June 15, who'd like to move it?
Move. Second.
And on the motion to postpone oh three, it's Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
No.
Oh, four is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, approving and authorizing the execution of the reimbursement agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Seven Hook Urban Renewal LLC. It's my understanding this is also going to be postponed.
We have a request for postponement, so we need a motion.
Most, to postpone to the meeting of June 15, who'd like to move it?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
On motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
No.
Oh, five is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, approving the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Avenue E Development AMS Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 132 and 140 Avenue E, which is identified as block 458 lot 1.01 and block 467 lot 23. It's my understanding, I got an email requesting this be postponed also?
Correct.
And who'd like to move it to June 15?
So move.
Second. And on the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
No.
Oh, six is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, approving the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and 218-220 Broadway Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 218-220 Broadway, which property is identified as block 319 lot 26, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held January 19 and was published and posted as required by law with notice that it would be considered for final passage following a public hearing at this, at the meeting of February 16, was postponed to the meeting of March 16 and April 20, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading, who'd like to move it?
So move.
Second.
And on the motion for second reading, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, approving the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and 218-220 Broadway Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 218-220 Broadway, which is identified as block 319 lot 26, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Good evening, council members.
Thank you.
For giving me this opportunity. This, this property is owned by my mother, it's 218 Broadway, and she asked me to appear on her behalf to, to tell you a few things about the property. She'd be here, she has failing health and mobility problems, so, and she would tell you that she's a lifetime resident of Bayonne. She raised her family here, like myself, I'm a lifetime resident and maintaining a law practice here in Bayonne. My mom's 86 years old and is looking for a favorable vote because the entire project is contingent on this financing agreement being approved. The property itself was purchased back in the 70s. I think I was in grammar school by my father. He ran it until his untimely death in 1995. We also lived in the first ward during that time. Since his death, we've maintained it as a rental property for, to subsidize my mom's income. And prior to that, when my dad ran it, it was a successful business. And although it was a gas station, it did have some aesthetic appeal. However, presently, it's, it's gone to a worse condition. It's an obsolete business, used to pump a lot of gas, actually, believe it or not, but with Costco and operations like that, it's become obsolete. The building itself is obsolete. Can't compete as this type of business. So the proposed project before you has a lot, has a lot of merit. You're going to lose a dilapidated, unsightly building in place of a property that would be the gateway to downtown Broadway and downtown Bayonne. It's the first thing you see when you travel south, and it's the last thing you see when you're going to leave downtown. Beautiful structure there would set the tone for the entire neighborhood, being south of the underpass. You know, not having the approval would jeopardize this plan. And a couple of things to note with this project, I don't know how many other projects are like this, but I can't think of any that are giving back as many parking spaces to the community. This property is bordered by cottage and Evergreen and, of course, on Broadway, and I think that gives back at least 12 parking spaces since 90% of the property is a driveway. It's not needed for the proposed project. This will certainly prove to be very beneficial to the neighborhood. And also, my family, my mother is undertaking a substantial environmental cleanup that's out of pocket for her. We don't want this to go unrecognized or unrewarded. You know, we seek your approval for this much-needed advancement for our city, having a beautiful landscape, building a block from the light rail will certainly enhance the neighborhood. We've lived here, we've loved Bayonne. We're not going anywhere. This is a good project for the city and something that will invigorate the area, will be a benefit to the city. I ask for your positive vote on this. Thank you.
Can you check online for comments? Because someone was trying to comment last time and no one was checking online. So do we have somebody, they wanted to comment on the last?
Jonathan, do you have any hands raised? Jonathan?
Can you hear?
Yes.
We have two hands raised, Peter Franco and Gail Podeski.
Go ahead and unmute Peter Franco.
Okay.
Should have went ladies first.
Peter, we can't hear you if you're talking. Maybe he's gone.
Can you unmute Gail?
That is unmuted.
Is Peter on, did you unmute Peter?
I just unmuted him again. We got a message from the questions board. I'm not getting any audio.
I want to speak about what the owner does outside tonight. Sorry, let me try and make it better. Okay, just move on, Madeline. I mean, I can...
Anybody else on oh six? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me may have a motion to close.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Franco did post in the chat that he wanted to talk about oh five, oh six, and oh seven, and oh eight. So I don't know. That's what he wrote in the meeting chat.
Oh, five you postponed, oh six...
If you can read that.
Can you get them?
I had to take a picture of it and enlarge it, it's so tiny. Could you read that up there? It's up there.
Can we finish the vote?
Well, not if a public was trying to speak on it.
We can't, we can't.
No, it haven't, don't want to shut them out. Can you try and unmute Mr. Franco again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Jack?
I don't know, Mr. Franco must be having problems with his phone. So we're going to move forward with the motion for final passage, Mr. Carroll. Please talk.
I voted, motion for final passage.
No, you didn't. You did, okay. Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
No, this council said we would not do more than 15 years for these projects. I'm sticking to my guns. I voted no on other ones that were 20 years, and my vote is no.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
No.
It's three to two. Oh, seven is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, approving a financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne Avenue E Development Mile High AMS Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 157-163 Avenue E, which property is identified as block 3234 lot 8.01, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. I also received the communication that they would like to postpone this to June 15. Who'd like to move it? And on the motion to move second reading to June 15, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Aye. Just so you know, because I just got a message from Gail saying it's not just Peter, because she can't, she was talking too and you can't hear her. So they are trying to talk, so there's some technical difficulty going on.
Our, now we're in, or theirs?
Well, I guess ours, because they both, two different phones calling in from two different locations, right? But we are not hearing them? Is there something wrong with our speakers or something?
Well, I don't know. We hear Jonathan. Jonathan...
I'm not hearing him on mine either.
Okay.
Oh, eight has been withdrawn and replaced with a resolution authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan for the block 465 lot nine, block 466 lots one, two, three, and four, and block 478 lots one and 1.01.
Mr. Richard Scott is not here tonight, but there, there's a representative from Conrail here tonight, I believe, and a letter was sent to the city objecting to Conrail property, block 506 lot two, being included in the redevelopment plan that had been produced by the planning board. And the request was to have, by Conrail, to have them removed from that plan, so instead of an ordinance going on, we just withdraw the ordinance. We previously referred this to the planning board for development, for the production of a plan that include all these blocks and lots, so this referral would just be the same thing that we referred in the past to acquiesce to Conrail's request and to have them prepare a plan that does not include block 506 lot two as part of the plan.
What number is that?
Number E, oh E.
It's the Duke Realty property. And we previously sent, several months ago, sent a referral over so that a plan could be prepared. The, that plan included block 506 lot two, which is owned by Conrail, and Conrail has since objected to the inclusion of that property in the plan. Mr. Mucelli is here also, he represents Duke. He's aware of the request to have removed, and the immediate reaction is that we should send it back to the planning board for the same, essentially the same plan, or a plan that acknowledges that block 506 lot two, the Conrail property, is not included in that plan.
Mr. Mucelli, do you, I mean, because I never see the letter. Did anyone, I don't, I don't know. I mean, is it possible to pass it and then it gets amended at the back end?
No, no, I think it was...
I got it, I'm on my emails.
The, the vote on this...
You got it?
Mr. Mucelli, you want to come up and...
I'm just, I mean, it's...
Good evening, Michael Mucelli, on behalf of Duke Realty. A few days ago, we were contacted by Conrail's council, expressing concerns about their inclusion in the redevelopment plan. I don't think there's an issue with us crossing their property, but they don't want to be in the redevelopment plan. We could talk with your attorneys about the reasons for that, but they asked, and we think it's probably better for the project to go back through the process and take them out, and it would benefit the city as well. So I didn't see the letter, but I have talked to Mr. Cokely of Connell Foley, who represents Conrail in this matter, and, and we worked out that request, and that's what I'm asking, and that's what Duke is asking the council to do tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it would just be a resolution referring, a resolution referring this matter back to the planning board for development of a plan that does not include 506 too. A motion for that.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the motion, on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Aye.
Oh, nine. 09 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter 35 zoning regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held April 20, 2022, was posted and published and posted on the bulletin board as required by law with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of May 18. It is now before the council for a public hearing and consideration. The resolution giving the ordinance second reading. Would like to move it?
Move. Second.
Second reading on the motion for giving the ordinance second reading, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter 35 zoning regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance... Interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Are there any questions on 09? Are there any hands raised online?
No, we can challenge it.
You still have Peter Gilgo Deskey's raise their hand.
You can unmute Gail.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Okay. It must have been their end because it wasn't our end at all. My question is, what are these zoning regulation changes, please?
It is section 4.1, which is the permit section, which is revising the zone... Giving the zoning officer 10 business days to complete the application rather than just 10 days.
I think it went from five to 10, right? Seven to 10.
Seven to 10.
So, we extended the turnaround time that, you know, there's a deadline in which when these things are submitted, they're required to answer the applicant within a certain amount of time. And they are requesting more time. More time before the deadline.
Okay. I guess they want to be safe and sorry. So, yes, thank you very much for answering my question.
And the next one's kind of the same for zoning, so...
Anybody else on 09? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
10 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter 33, planning and development regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held April 20, was published and posted on the bulletin board as required by law with notice that it would be further considered. Final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of May 18 is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And may I have a motion to give the ordinance second reading?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion for second reading, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter 33, planning and development regulations. This also is moving it from seven days after the submission of an application to 10 business days. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Anyone on 010? Are there hands raised on 010?
No hands raised.
Thank you. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
011 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter 8 taxi cabs and limousines, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held April 20, 2022, was posted and published and posted on the bulletin board as required by law with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of May 18 is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And may I have a motion to give the ordinance second reading?
Move it.
Second.
On the motion for second reading, resolution for second reading, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye. Before anyone asks, this is an increase in the taxi cab fares. They're increasing them basically all by $3. They have not had a rate increase in eight years, right? Or longer? About eight years. So, that's what this proposal is about.
Are there any questions on 011? Any hands raised for 011?
No hands raised.
No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
First speaker is Christopher Munoz.
Good evening. Christopher Munoz, 70 Evergreen Street, Bayonne, New Jersey, and also the vice president of the Bayonne Board of Education. I stand before you this evening to speak again about the Boyeri project down on 440, the 1,250 unit project that this council approved last meeting. I was told after I left from that marathon session that there was a non-binding resolution to include education in that project, which is not included in the project, for 3% to 10%. Is that true? A non-binding resolution to include education anywhere between 3% and 10%?
There's been no action taken by this board.
There was no action? That wasn't included?
We have not taken an action.
Okay.
So, I don't know where you got the percentages from, but I made the suggestion that we give the 10%.
Right. Well, I was going to actually thank you, Councilman La Palusa, for being consistent with that all throughout your years, about 10% for education. I do appreciate that. But I stand before you again to ask that you include the educate... You know, the Board of Education in that program, in that project. If only... I did some research. I saw them, our brilliant BA Dan Castles. And we estimated if 200 kids came out of that project, it would cost the Board of Education $3.51 million to educate those students out of that project. And since that project now calls for zero for education...
Sure it does. We did make the motion last month.
Right, well, okay.
But it's not binding, yeah.
All right. So, okay, so let's go back to...
Just interrupt you. We could do a formal resolution for the next meeting including the 10% because everybody was in agreement to the suggestion that I made, so... As far as I know, right? I don't... Nobody was in disagreement, so...
Okay. So, I'll be back next meeting to make sure. But that's why I was going to ask, why non-binding? Non-binding really does nothing, right? We want to make it permanent. Okay. So, you're going to put on the agenda next meeting a resolution to include 10%?
Yeah, because you're not in agreement next time.
Okay.
We will formalize it.
Right. And so, and the city council will not be able to back out of that? Okay? No, I want to make sure that we... The difference between non-binding and binding.
You've known me a long time. I'm a man of my word.
Yeah, no, no, you are. Gary, I'm not questioning you. I'm just asking. When I hear non-binding, and I spoke to Councilman Carroll about this, non-binding to me means it's not firm. And I want to make sure that...
A resolution by definition is non-binding.
An ordinance...
An ordinance... You'd have to reverse an ordinance via a public hearing. So, you know, I think if the council goes to the trouble of passing a resolution to append to a financial agreement or an approval for a project, I think they'd be hard pressed to sit here and look you in the face six, eight, 10 months from now when everything comes through and say, "Well, we're going to ignore that resolution." They could. But same thing with an ordinance. You can overturn an ordinance with another ordinance. But by definition, a resolution is non-binding.
All right. So, we'll be on the next agenda. Excellent. No, thank you. Because I was prepared to come here like the boy from Oliver saying with the porridge. Please, sir, can I have some more? I mean, you know, if that's what I have to do to get to fight for the kids in the city, I'll do that. The other thing I wanted to add was, last meeting, I was accused of playing politics. And, you know, this is a meeting after the election. I came to the last meeting because that's when the resolution was on there. You know, I wasn't on the board in 2015 when that was passed, nor was I aware of it, you know? And I just want to make sure that you understand that I am a duly elected representative of the Bayonne Board of Education. I was here fighting for my constituents. I was here fighting for the kids, for the staff of the Bayonne Board of Education. I was representing my constituents. Some of you on here should try to do that. It's a very rewarding experience, okay? I will thank Councilman La Palusa one more time for being consistent with the views on education. I do appreciate that. But I just want to make it very clear. When I step up here and I... And I, you know, name myself, or I should say identify myself as the vice president of the Bayonne Board of Education, I'm here fighting on behalf of the people that I represent and doing what I was elected to do because I was very upset that someone up there made that comment because that was kind of a low blow. All right? I was elected just like you were, which congratulations, by the way, on a lot of your reelections. Sharon, I know we haven't heard the last of you. And Sal, you should have ran, brother. That's all I'm going to say. All right? But again, I just want to make that very clear that I was here not to play politics. I was here to do my job, which a lot of you up here claim to do. So, do it. And I do appreciate that you are going to include that 10%. I will be here... When's the next meeting? The 15th? Okay. I won't be here because my son's graduating eighth grade proudly, and I won't be here for that. But depending on how quickly the graduation is, if you could probably put it later on the agenda, I will come right afterwards. Okay? If not, I will be here. I will send a representative from the Board of Education to accept that. So, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. And thank you for your service on the school board. I know that's fully voluntary.
Thank you.
No compensation. Had a lot of headache.
Melissa Rodriguez? And then we'll switch to online.
Good evening. Melissa Godeski Rodriguez, 148 Avenue F. So, as most of you know, I always come up here pretty positive. There's no politics for me. It's really just about, I'm born and raised, and I care, like many of you do. A few weeks ago, some of you heard that there was some issues on the east side. Anybody, and you please, and President, you can answer, but I don't know if any of our council members currently live on the east side, far on the east side. I don't think so, right? So, it was a mess. How many kids were stuck on a bus? Got caught in that? My kid was 20 minutes late to school and had a full blown meltdown because he has special needs. Kids had to get pushed in wheelchairs in going through all that construction. It was a mess. And it happens, and I understand that. But I have some questions about that because my son was impacted along with many other students on the east side on those buses. What happened? President, if you would help me address that question, what happened?
I can't tell you. I did get your email, and I know I responded. I forwarded on to the appropriate people. I believe they answered right away. And, you know, I can only just say bad planning because I don't know why it was done at the time it was done when knowing schools and there was no communication with the schools. I'm not sure why. I'm not sure whose responsibility that was. I don't know if anyone wants to address that, what happened.
I do want to acknowledge the fact that there were some swift responses. And I truly appreciate that. I never want to take away from that. Like, from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate that because it shows that concerns were heard. But to me, and it didn't seem like a breakdown in communication that had a really negative impact on so many students, so many for their day and probably for their week because now they have anxiety about tomorrow, right? It was just like this rolling effect. You know, I think my second question is the ability to communicate with residents. We have text messages. We have emails. We have carrier pigeons. Could not have anyone even notified? I don't... Is there a way...
I think it would have perfect use for the OEM alert. We get them about so many things.
The Board of Ed would have been a great way to help out just a little bit. And I'm happy that we're owning that. Are you all aware of the level of communication breakdown that happened that day? All I want is to know you guys were aware. I know it's not necessarily you because you guys do a English job as well.
Well, I'll say we don't get that communication either. You know, so we were not informed. I became informed when you sent an email that I saw and responded to and forwarded on to the police department on to the police department, and to see, you know, if anyone could figure out what happened, and what went wrong, and try and get somebody over there to maybe coordinate and get that traffic moving, because the construction was going on. At the same time, buses were trying to come there, and there was a lot of other issues. But again, that's completely up to, we're not informed of that, right? That's the administrative side of the, of City Hall, and unfortunately, the communication doesn't come this way either. So, you know, that would be a question for the mayor, public safety, that's who, and I don't think DPW was involved in that, but, so.
I appreciate that. But again, thank you for those who did respond. And Bayon PD, this following day, actually helped support get buses through that, so shout out to Bayon PD, because they're always there, day or night, doing their job, and they made sure those buses were able to get through for some of those kids the next day to ensure their safety. So, I guess the next question is around, just, what plans are in place to potentially start thinking about a special needs camp here in Bayon? I know that Pete Emadeo, the angel that he is, there's not enough good words to say about what he does for the city of Bayon. Okay? But that, we would, a lot of us parents have been talking, and to see a longer camp, from four to six weeks, of course, there's a lot of logistics. I think President Nadrowski, you've kind of mentioned that in some conversation. What plans, if any, are there to start considering a additional recreation camp for children with special or different needs? Because we do have a growing population, if I'm not mistaken, close to 1,500-plus in the city, and to bus our children, I mean, there's a camp that I can send my kid to three hours away. I don't really want to put him on a bus three hours away. We have a wonderful city here, we're doing wonderful things, we have these growing, we're renovating parks, we're doing so many things. So, what plans, if any, are there to start considering this, as a real moving, as a growing point for the city?
I'm not aware of any. I would suggest you, you know, make an appointment with the mayor's office, and see if you can sit down and have a conversation with him, because that would honestly have to stem out of, you know, be pushed down from him.
I appreciate that, and hopefully, going forward, if that does, I would really hope that I would see all of your support for such an amazing thing, since our kids here really need something to do during the summer. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any hands raised online?
We have two hands raised, Gil Gadeski and Peter Franco.
You can unmute Gale, please.
Good evening, and then, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. I wanted to speak on O1. It behooves me just to witness what took place during O1, and it was voted correctly. The other comment regarding O1 and O2 is, ratings just came out for all the hospitals in our area, and Bayonne Medical Center, CarePoint, was rated as C, and Hudson Regionals was rated a B, the same as Jersey City Medical Center. So, my comment to the council is, who would you rather have take care of your loved one? Someone with a rating of a C, or someone with a rating of a B? I just want you to think very, very carefully about that, before you take calls on O2 next month. It's very frustrating to the taxpayer of the city of Bayon. With these ratings coming out, you need to really sit down and ask yourselves, what is best for Bayon? Enough of the power, enough of politics. Get back to basics, and move us forward in the right way, relating to our health and well-being, including the disabled. So, please ask yourself that question. Now, also, I just have a comment to all the residents of the city of Bayon. Last month, I discussed, I made a comment about the right to vote. There's over 42,000 registered voters in the city of Bayon, and less than 10,000, 10,000, less than 10,000 voted. So, to the residents of the city of Bayon, you need to step up to the plate. Like I said at the last meeting, people have died and fought for the right to vote. So, please, the next time a vote comes along for the primaries in June, please step up and vote. Madam Clerk and her staff worked extremely hard, we had early voting, we had extra days, so please, please, use your rights, that were worked very hard for. And please, council, please strongly consider O1, O2, or O2 down, because it behooves me to stand witness to what took place during O1. And if anybody needs clarification, please feel free to give me a call, because I was witness to the entire conversation, and how Madeline presented herself. It was clear, and it was concise. So, I thank each and every one of you, and please have a good evening.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. One more thing, is Director Carter there?
He is.
I have a question for him. What's happening with the Walk Bridge on 25th Street between Prospect and Avenue E? What is taking place there?
25th Street.
I can't hear anybody.
He's coming up. Yet, Mr. Carter was hiding in the back today, because he's lost his voice a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Here he comes.
Is that him coughing up a storm?
No, that's Sal.
No, that's someone else, I was coughing earlier. How about you, Gale? The 25th Street Bridge is being supervised by CME, they're the engineer on the job. I don't have anything to do with the 25th Street Bridge.
Who does?
That would be CME, Rob Russo, the engineer.
I don't understand you, Tom, you're so hoarse.
Okay, he said, the city engineer, Rob Russo, would be the one to have the information on that. We can have him get an update and get it out to you tomorrow, Gale, or have him reach out to you directly. Can we do that, Jackie? Have, Jackie will have Rob.
Everybody, everybody's asking, what's going on with that bridge? You know, people need to walk to the store and everything, it's very, very inconvenient. And again, Director Carter, you don't have to come back up, but can we start working on the 32nd Street Bridge, please? It looks like a jigsaw puzzle.
He said yes.
So, I'm telling Jackie, I understand the grant money is already out there, so I hope, I hope it gets worked on sooner rather than later.
Sumac, Sumac has the plans, they're waiting, so she's, she's waiting for the guidelines on the grant, Tommy? Sumac is waiting for the guidelines on the grant, and then that'll move forward.
Thank you very much, council.
Are there any other hands?
Peter Franco.
Is his hand still raised, or is it left up from before?
It's still raised. He's asking if we can ask you.
Sure.
And that would be, what are the terms of the financial agreements for O5, O6, and O7? And the next question is, O8, is this use posed as a residential or mixed, or the number of units, height, breakdown of bedrooms per unit, or not?
No, he didn't guess how it would have been. Go ahead. Jack's gas station. So, yet, Jack's gas station?
He said O8.
Oh, sorry.
O8 is entirely commercial. That's on the, it's down by IMTT and Exxon. O5 is on the Avenue E, that's the Silk Lofts. O6 was voted down this evening, that was a residential, several stories, I think 60 units.
Didn't you vote yes? Sal voted yes on that?
No, it was a 3-2 fail.
3-2, it isn't, it was a 3-2 pass.
3-2 fail.
Didn't need a supermajority.
He's three votes.
Oh, I thought Sal voted for it, and them two voted for it.
No, I voted against.
He voted against. It failed. So, O6 did not pass tonight, Peter. O7 is, was carried, that's residential at Silk Lofts West. O8 is the commercial, entirely commercial lot down on the east side, or a series of lots on the east side.
I think he wanted to know the number of units and the heights. I think that was on Delta.
For which one?
He said the terms, I'm reading it, the height, and number of bedrooms, or, and per unit, and parking.
For what, what number?
Do you think I can remember?
The only one that would fit would be.
O8, it looks like.
All right, O8, O8's commercial.
Oh, it's commercial, okay. Sorry, but the print is so tiny. Yeah, that was O8. Okay. It's not residential.
Any more questions from Mr. Franco?
Nope, it looks like he's left the meeting, just came up, so, I guess not.
And Mrs. Lynch.
Hi, Julie Sanchez Lynch, 82 West 5th Street. Well, I want to say, congratulations. I hope you serve the constituents a little better than the past, but I'm sure you'll do a great job. Ron, do you remember me? Don't you say you want an apology? For cursing me out, using vulgarities at 16th Street Firehouse, because there was a truck in the driveway?
Right, illegally parked.
It wasn't legally parked, because if it was measured, it was over 100 feet. But as an elected official, that's how you treat a woman? Question, is that how you treat a woman as an elected official?
Ma'am, that's your perception.
So, you telling me to go F off is a perception?
No, you're putting your finger in my face, it's very dis.
Excuse me? You came after me near the truck.
No, I didn't.
And you, listen, I'm not going to argue with you. There was people there.
I know you're trying to make a circus.
Who approached me to make sure I was okay, because of the way you behaved. You were supposed to be a gentleman, an ex-police officer who was held to a different standard.
And you were yelling and screaming.
No, 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 no.
Telling you that truck was illegal.
No, no.
Witnesses.
All right, all right.
Incorrect. Incorrect. All right, incorrect. Excuse me, excuse me.
Just, yeah, let's just not have the same argument. I guess we can see kind of what happened, so.
Okay. And Gary Lappalusa, we did not run an evil campaign. I wish you luck, and hopefully, nothing happened to you that happened to Sal. I wish you luck.
Thank you.
That's a left-handed compliment, I guess?
No, 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 I'm glad you made it. You're grateful, you people. They love you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Council President, I do have a little information about the 25th Street Bridge. It has actually been constructed, it is in storage. There's some utility line issues involving the 25th Street area that have to be resolved before it can be put into place.
Yeah, they were the same ones we knew about.
I understand it was Verizon and Altice.
Yeah.
I don't know the details, but that's, that's the issue I was, I was advised of a few days ago.
That was the same issue that was back in September.
Okay.
It's not a new issue. So, I don't think it's, I think that was public knowledge, but thank you for the extra information.
You're welcome, and the engineer would have the additional information.
Good evening, Mike Morris, 123 Avenue C. Up until now, I have stayed very neutral through this whole campaign, because I considered Sharon a friend, and I still do. Gary's my very, very good trusted friend. But I have to say publicly, that there's nothing that anyone could say about him that is bad. In fact, many people in this town couldn't even emulate him in any way, including Julie Sanchez, who, unfortunately, you may not remember me, but I remember you from grammar There's no need for underhanded, or backhanded.
It was not.
It was. Oh, it definitely was.
Okay, can I actually, not to talk unless you're at the podium.
So, I'm speaking, so I have the floor.
And Mike, you can direct your comments to the people up here, not to the ordinance.
I am directing it to you first, and to the rest of the council through you.
Yes.
So, there's no need for it. The election's over. Let's have peace. This town has been torn apart enough. I grew up here, I intend to live here, there are certain individuals I wish I would leave, but I'm not. I'm staying through the whole course of it, until they drag me out of here dead. So, enough is enough. Work together, please, that's what you're elected for. Hopefully, some way you'll be in the background, Sharon, I really like you, I like the work that you do with the food bank, I back you 100%, 1,000%. You know how I feel about that. When I reached out for you, that early morning, at quarter to seven in the morning, woke you up, you followed through, you were fantastic. I have nothing bad to say about you, I know your whole family, but I do not, and I will not allow someone to publicly come up here and disparage Gary's name. He is my friend, he's going to be my friend till the day I die. There's no need for it. If you're, if you're disheartened that you weren't elected, well, then maybe go out and try again. There's plenty of times that you can do it. There's a future, how do you do it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
O12 and O13 have been removed.
No, we got nothing.
Enough of that. Consent resolution for the communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C1 through C5. Are there any questions on the communications? No questions on the communications. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski? Officers' report is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within them to be adopted. It covers OR through OR4. Any questions on the officers' report? Okay, no questions on the officers' reports. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
I just want to make one comment, I'm very happy to see the bids coming in for 49th Street intersection by Avenue C, and I vote aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski? Consent agenda for the resolutions is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers OR1 through OR17, CR17. Any questions on the consent resolutions? Any questions, any hands raised online on the consent resolutions?
We have one hand raised, Gil Gadeski.
And it was earlier when they missed her, I'm just going to let you know.
On which one? If you unmute Gale, we'll find out.
Good evening, council, I had my hand raised for communication, it was not recognized. My question is, why are we going out for more bids for paving? Today, I saw the Department of Public Works going around filling potholes, and it seems like the ones that the company were paying to do, they're falling down and sinking again, and now Department of Public Works is doing double duty by filling them again. So, why are we, what's the story here, please?
Well, I think you're talking about, you're talking about the pothole machine that we got at first? The pothole killer that we contracted to fill the potholes?
Yes.
Well, yeah, we stopped doing that, I don't think we're using that anymore, right? We weren't, I don't think we thought it was, didn't work as well. But, yeah, but she's asking why we're redoing it, but she means we're redoing, the pothole killer came and filled stuff, and now DPW is back out there filling them. This is for paving whole roads, milling them up, Gale, and it's grant money, where we rip up the whole road and repave it cleanly, not, not fill potholes. That's what this is about. We're going out to bid for that, to actually pave the streets like they just did over on, which caused part of the problem that Ms. Gadeski had with the roads closed over there in front of the new developments, where they just repaved the streets a couple weeks ago to do like that, brand-new pavement, not pothole filling. And it's grant money that we're applying for.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, my, my second part of that question is, when the developer develops down by Chosen Few Ways, et cetera, they're paving the road, correct?
No, no.
And then, they mustn't be doing.
They're not, they're not required to pave the road. Gale, the developers down there are not required to pave the road, just like the one on 22nd Street, we just paved in front of that new development, and that was taxpayers' money. It was not, or grant money, it was not the developers. We have not made that a requirement.
Okay. Okay, well, going forward, maybe, just like Board of Education needs extra dollars, which I support immensely on these developments, maybe a resolution, although maybe it's non-binding, you need to include something to that effect, besides concrete being put around buildings and dressing it up on the building property, maybe we need to consider that the roads in front of, and behind of, and on side of these buildings should be the responsibility of the developers. I mean, we're giving them 15-year abatements and pilots, et cetera. I mean, we're giving them 15-year abatements and pilots, et cetera, or 10-year, whatever it may be now. We need to consider what's best for the people, the taxpayers of the city of Bayonne. So I'm just throwing that out there for the council to consider it come June meeting. You need to include something regarding road paving on these new development areas because the construction causes more damage and then we have to go back and repave everything. So thank you, Council.
Thank you. And I'm just going to correct that Mr. Cotter informed me that paving on 22nd Street and Avenue E was actually paid for by the developer down there. So I just want to set that record straight. Okay?
Okay. Any questions on the consent resolutions? And on the consent resolutions, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R1 is approving the temporary emergency number five, not number four, in the calendar year 2022 municipal budget.
Move it.
Second. And on R1, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye. What was R2?
R2 and R3 have been removed. R4 is authorizing and consenting to the transfer of the financial agreement from the Peninsula Lofts Urban Renewal LLC to 197 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC. It is a resolution moved by council member Perez. Ms. Nadrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R5 has also been removed. R6 is approving and adopting the memorandum of agreement between the City of Bayonne and Asme Council 63, Local 2261, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2026, and authorizing the execution of the same. It's moved by council member Lapalusa. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Say.
Any questions on R6?
Wait, Mr. Weaver wants to speak.
Billy Weaver, 154 Avenue E. First of all, I want to say, I'm standing in front of you for all of my members. This was a long four or five months that I went through back and forth, but I have a few thank yous. First, I want to thank the mayor, the entire council. I'm going to go to the law department, Jay Coffey, and Donna Russo worked very hard with me, with Donna Mauer. We went through everything. I think all my members are very happy with it. I'm sure if you read through it, I left nothing on time. You have great workers out there. That's one thing I will tell you. Inside City Hall, out on the street, everywhere they are, they work hard for you. They just want you to notice them now, okay? So I don't really come up here much, but I'm doing this for my workers. So I just want to thank each and every one of you up there. Every one of yous, I've dealt with you in the past. Madam Chair, you know where I stand? I bleed green. That's it. All right? So I just do what yous got to do. This was a great contract. You're not going to get rich from it, but at the end of the day, my people are happy. And again, I want to thank each and every one of you, Donna Russo and Donna Mauer. We worked on weekends to get this done. Am I correct? And I want to thank Janice and Debbie Fossehanne, also in the payroll. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. You've always represented the union well, and we appreciate you and all your workers and your union. They're great, and we wish we could pay you more. But Donna Mauer won't allow it.
Any other comments on R6? Are there any hands raised on R6?
No hand raised.
Okay. And on R6, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R7 is a resolution moved by council member Perez approving and adopting the memorandum of agreement between the City of Bayonne, the City of Bayonne Parking Enforcement Utility and Crossing Guards and the Asme Council 63, Local 2261, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2026, and authorizing the execution of the same. Ms. Nadrowski, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R7? And on R7, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Once again, I'd just like to thank them. They do a great job also and are probably still underpaid, so aye.
R8 is ratifying and affirming the actions of the mayor and the city clerk in executing a lease agreement with Public Service Electric and Gas to allow PSENG to test soil electrical resistivity in the 11th Street Park and Avenue E in connection with the PSENG's engineering of the substation updates at its Bergen Point Substation located at Evergreen and Orient Street.
Move it.
Say.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R9 is awarding Zookra Inc. from Garfield, New Jersey for the improvements of the intersection at Avenue E and West 49th Street for the bid price of $284,000, which would be $20 and $20.
I'll move it, but I think it's supposed to be Avenue C and West 49th Street.
Yeah.
Yes. Avenue C and West 49th. And who'd like to second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R10 is awarding the contract to Top Line Construction for various street paving for the calendar year 2022 for the bid price of $1,290,110.60.
Move it.
Are the streets listed in there? Oh, yeah, I heard. Are they listed in there?
Not in the one I have.
Yeah, no, okay, okay.
Who'd like to second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R11 is authorizing the tax council of the City of Bayonne to authorize, to enter into and execute a stipulation of settlement on behalf of the City of Bayonne consistent with the terms provided on the attached Schedule A with respect to the outstanding appeal listed on the Schedule for Block 359, Lot 4.01.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R12 is naming and dedicating the public park located at 28th Street and Avenue F as Mikowski Park in honor of the former council, Joseph F. Mikowski, deceased, and Joseph E. Mikowski.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Enthusiastically aye. He's an excellent gentleman and was always invited around the city council, especially for people he represented.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
I'm very happy for him and his family and very well-deserved, and I vote aye.
Mr. Perez.
I totally agree with Councilman Carroll. He is an outstanding gentleman and just a wonderful man with a tremendous character. I vote aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R13 is authorizing and directing the planning board of the City of Bayonne to prepare redevelopment plan for 69-83 La Fonte Way, also known as Block 412, Lot 3 pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Move it.
Second.
Excuse me, Madam President. It should be 6973 La Fonte Way. I normally wouldn't get up, but as you know, some people have made issues out of that in the past, and I want to make sure we don't give them that opportunity again.
Let's see what's on that thing.
Thank you, I apologize. 69 to 73. The block and lot is right, but the address is wrong. Thank you.
The resolutions are right.
The resolutions are correct. It's a 73.
We've heard other arguments.
And any questions on R13? And on R13, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R14 is opposing Passaic Valley Sewer Commission's proposed gas-burning power plant and supporting the use of renewable energy-based hybrid microgrid powered primarily by solar and battery storage for the Passaic Sewer Commission to achieve its resis-ity program, resiliency program.
Move it.
Second.
On R14, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
I have nothing else. With nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
You want to mention the Memorial Day Parade, just for a moment?
Oh, yeah. What is it, Monday, May 30?
Monday, May 3, 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, yeah, the Memorial Day Parade. Sorry about that. I didn't have my calendar. Monday, May 30, 9:00 AM, starts on 5th Street.
9:00 AM ceremony.
Yeah, the ceremony at 10:00 PM kickoff. On 5th, 10, I'm sorry, 10:00 AM kickoff. That's a long ceremony. So the ceremony is down by the statue on the triangle by Mary J. School, and then they kickoff on the corner of Broadway and 5th Street at 10:00 AM. Come support your veterans.
And on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.